Seven o'clock, we're gonna start the meeting. We're being recorded, and cell phones, please.
Go to silent mode here. It's about the time my kids call, right?
Oh, that's okay. You all set?
I am.
We need to read this. We've got a vote on that.
Okay. Abington Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a petition Thursday, March 7th, 7:00 PM, Town Hall Glennewitz Way, for the continued petition of Abington Investments LLC, 245 Central Street, Abington, for a comprehensive permit under MGL Chapter 40B for relief of the following: 175-21A and J uses 175-29 Dimensional and Density Regulations; 175-43A, 1A; 175-432A; 175-50B and C; 175-52G Parking and Loading Requirements; 175-31, 175-32, A, B, C, D, E Multi Family Use; 175-34 Earth Removal; 175-37 Transit Oriented Development; 175-66 Buffer Strip; 175-67.1 Outdoor Lighting for 144 Rental Units Known As Abington Senior Housing at 1015 Plymouth Street, property located on Assessors Map 17 and 18, lots 23 and 6, in the R30 Zone. So, first thing on the agenda here is, we have an invoice from Tetra Tech in the sum of $5,683.60 for the ongoing review of this project, and we'd like, obviously they want to get paid, so do we have a motion to authorize payment of invoice number 514-11126?
Should I make a motion to authorize a payment of the Tetra Tech invoice dated February 22nd, 2019, in the amount of $5,683.60 to be paid with funds deposited by the petitioner for the purpose of the review?
I'll second that.
Oh, favor?
Aye.
This is from the Joint Water Works. This notice will serve as a confirmation that the water is available for the purpose site of 144 units at the Senior Housing Project in Abington. At the November 28, 2017 meeting, the Abington Rockland Board of Commissioners' water voted unanimously to vote to approve the water to the project presented by Mr. Glenn LaPointe. Fees will have to be paid on the application. Do you want to do this one?
Sure. This is from the Department of Public Works. Thank you for attending Board of Sewer Commission hearing. The board voted unanimously on October 29, 2018, conceptual approval, conceptual approval of Plymouth Street project of 144 units is presented to the town of Abington, and agreed the infrastructure is more than adequate to handle the additional flow. System development fees will be required for this project prior to building permit sign-off. If you have any further questions, please do not hesitate to call our office. Sincerely, John F. Stone, Director. You are Mr. Chairman?
That's it? I guess so. Is that mic set up on the other side?
Yeah.
Okay, so right over there, yeah.
Well, Sean's getting the plans up. I'll just start. For the record, Dan Bailey, attorney at Pierce Atwood in Boston, for the project. With me is Sean Hardy, Sean Carpenter, and the owners, the LaPoints. Last time we were here, there were a number of issues that came up in the peer review. We've revised plans and submitted those to the board. My understanding is that Sean Reardon, your peer review consultant, didn't have enough time to review all of the plans, and in particular the storm drainage report, for tonight, so the decision was made that he'll come next time and be able to address everything in one night. But in the meantime, you know, you've already read a couple of the letters regarding water and sewer that were outstanding issues from the last time, and what we'd like to do is present the changes that we have made, see if there's any input from the board on those, and, you know, as usual, we'll take your questions and, you know, see if we can, you know, kind of really winnow the open number of issues down. So I'll turn it over to Sean.
Good evening. Again, my name is Sean Hardy with Hardy &amp; Dan Design Group. Plans that we revised were based on, I think, what we had heard at the last meeting. We tried to address what we thought were the open items. So, the first thing we did, we changed proposed sidewalk to the other side of the road that was requested.
Is that the?
The existing houses down at Plymouth Street, before it was down on this lower, on the southerly side, we flopped it over to the opposite side, so now the sidewalks could be on that side the whole way. That was a request. They specifically wanted the sidewalk over on that side, I believe, to buffer from the street a little bit more, so we accomplished that. To do that, it goes off the hallway, there's a Nash line here that comes out, so we need a proposed crosswalk up at the top by where the building is.
Yeah, I see that.
So, that's how we accomplished that.
By moving the sidewalk and putting it on the other side, did the road shift?
Yeah, the road, the four-foot wide sidewalk, so the road shifted, not quite the four feet, because the radius down at the end had to, it was like three feet, I believe, approximately, yeah.
I must say, this is a little way of not having Tetra Tech here.
Yeah, Tetra Tech had an issue with the drop box, the plans weren't in the drop box, and the drainage report came in a couple of days ago, so I really didn't think that it was worth it for him to be here if he didn't have any information. So, the, they can address, I guess, you know, they can address the things they've changed, but we need to have Sean look at everything.
Okay.
Definitely.
Thank you.
The next change we made, we widened the right-of-way, I'll call it, to 29 feet for the cross-section of the road. So we have still the 22-foot wide driveway with the four-foot wide sidewalk. There was concern with how close the guardrail was to the curb line, so we made it wider so that there's a foot between the face of the curb and the face of the guardrail. That assumes that the guardrail is in the middle of the retaining wall, there's still the opportunity to push that out. Again, I'm not a structural engineer, and when this thing goes forward, a structural engineer's gonna have to design this wall. It's likely that guardrail can be on the upward side of that wall to get a little bit more, a little too, but...
And again, it's not guardrail going all the way down the road there, it's just...
Not the whole length of the road, just where the retaining wall is to keep people from both cars and people along the sidewalk.
Okay.
If it's higher than that. The size of the dumpster was modified to allow 20-foot, and those comments came, Tetra Tech. So we have a dumpster over here, and initially we didn't have a 20-foot wide width there to allow a fire truck to make that through, so now that 20-foot is there, and a fire truck has 20-foot access all the way around the entire building there, as best we could. So, we also added three additional hydrants to the layout, two within the parking lot and showed those as well. Initially, we had one right here, just as you came into the site. Now we have another one over here, at the other end of the parking lot, and another towards the back end over here, along the way, as we looped the water main through. There's one that's further up, just off the page over in the senior center as well. The third one we added, we heard the comment, and it's at the midpoint, approximately down here of the roadway, so if something happens. So here's Plymouth Street, it's just off the back of the sidewalk, about halfway down the roadway.
So there's not a hydrant over at the, let's see. Okay, I'm not sure which, if you look at the back parking lot where the dumpster is, is there a hydrant in that area right there?
There is not.
Where's the nearest hydrant in relationship to that corner? And what's the approximate distance?
That's a 96-foot circle, so 200 feet. Certainly if there was, I think the, I thought the fire chief was gonna send something saying that he was approved this layout, but if the board wanted, I mean, certainly if you wanted to condition another hydrant over there, that's, we could do it.
I just question that. I think there should be another hydrant. That's my opinion. That whole block over by the dumpster, that area right there, that whole parking area, I mean, that's a severe distance from the middle hydrant, where you have right here. You might want to look at that one more time. I'm just saying, it seems like a long distance from this hydrant. I talked to the fire chief myself, and you're right, but when I'm looking at this, I think someone needs to look at it again. You may need one in that far corner. That's my opinion at least.
I mean, yeah, if that's what...
I don't know, I just think that's strange that you don't have a hydrant in the far corner.
If it was a requirement, I think it could be accommodated.
Okay, so we'll condition it.
Yes, please. Have them look at it at least, because it seems like a long, if you will, lay, the hose.
So that would be in the southern parking area.
Okay, thank you.
We modified the parking layout to, we removed two parking spaces that disenters for emergency access. I think that was discussed towards the end of the last meeting, about possibly removements in spaces to accommodate that. That facilitates a better radius there, a turning radius if needed for emergency vehicles. We also identified over the 14 spaces that are weighed and butt up against the power line easement. We showed those as being eliminated if the, for the need, if you guys had expressed a desire to have some more snow storage, so we did that. We also, the attorney, looked into the power easement and what rights and access, because we also show some snow storage in that as well, and the feeling is that that is a right that the owners of the property have, so they can do that. They just can't obstruct access to the power lines, so storing the snow on the perimeter would be acceptable.
Just to elaborate on that a bit, this is a sort of classic, very old power line easement, 70, 80 years old, and so it doesn't really spell out the rights and obligations of the parties all that well. All it says is that Edison has the right of access for utility lines, above ground, below ground, you know, et cetera. So, the way easement law works is that the owner can do anything that's not inconsistent with the easement. So we've got to make sure that, I mean, I don't think we could pile snow up six feet high so that Edison couldn't get through, but as long as Edison can get through, we're meeting the terms of the easement.
Is there a rollback there, by any chance? Do we know?
I don't. No.
And then, this is probably where Tetra Tech didn't see the changes, but there was a few, as far as the drainage, there was a question, so I had added a modified drainage area now. I'll show you that. Please, Tetra Tech's, or Sean's question was, what are the current flows? So this is the existing drainage area map, which now will show the direction of runoff. Up here is where the development is, so this concern was that flows would come off the train tracks and come into this area, or the senior center flows could come into this area, and they could, they would be routed through our proposed drainage system and might inundate it. So, I added a lot more contours and a lot more labels to the plan, and it shows that the train tracks, there's almost like a sway-up between our property and there's a ridge in the tracks, so any water that falls in the tracks comes this way southerly, and then the contours up here, we added for the senior center as well. Those flows kind of go overland this way and end up in the wetland, they don't come through this direction, so those flows aren't contributing to our proposed drainage system. One of the other things that he had asked me to do, and again, it's kind of in the big thick report, but modify a way that I calculated the infiltration rate of the system. I did that, and it resulted, what it does is it takes, the way I did it is when the water is coming in and it's stacking up, it tends to speed up because of the pressure of the water's pushing it down. There's a different setting in the HydroCAD software that just says it's always coming out at the slower rate, so we made that modification. The result of that was we had to add some more chambers, so the drainage system did change to add some of those contact chambers up on the spot.
So, this plan is, this plan is kind of important, because it actually shows you, it shows you exactly why they have to have everything back here.
Right.
Because these lines are the wetland lines. So this is all wetland, this is all wetland, so that's why the entire development is over here, and it's, I mean, you can actually see the development based on the wetlands and not the wetlands, you can see where the road is, and that's why they did it the way they did it.
So when I made that modification to the fault systems, subsurface infiltration systems, I had to add some more chambers to the system, but overall the design stayed the same for that. One of the other things that we had done at the request, there was a cut-fill calculation that was done. I did that using, and Sean had asked, there's a, AutoCAD has different choices, and when you build in the surfaces, you can get a calculation. It ends up being about 16,000, almost 17,000 cubic yards coming in, but what that doesn't do is take into account the buildings, the foundations of the buildings, so that number is substantially less. But that, you know, all things being equal, the HydroCAD calculation would tell you that it was about almost 17,000 cubic yards coming in. Again, the size of the buildings, they both have basements, so that number gets smaller. That was gonna be one of the back-and-forths. I wasn't sure what specifically, I did what he asked, which was do the HydroCAD calculation, so...
That's good to know that they're gonna have basements, that's interesting, yeah.
Those are the changes. I know there was a question still about some of the site lighting and things like that, but I had mentioned at the last meeting that the lights that are chosen have the shields that are adjustable and can go to zero with the cutoff shields, and when we pick a final layout, which I think we probably now have done, I can have the lighting guy redo it and show, and make them so that they go zero, and you guys could have that officially to say that's what we're doing. But I know there was some tweaking still of layout and things like that, so it didn't seem like it was an effort worth him, you know, changing it again, because it was a change. By flopping the sidewalk over to the other side, he's gonna have to readjust where those lights go, so I was kind of holding pat on that until you guys saw this layout.
Okay, was there any talk on the middle part right here where the bridge goes across, that site vision?
The architect is here, I think he wants to show some of the details of the building. The initial building design that he had done shows that it's a glass panel, so I think Sevi, if you wanted to kind of show...
Mr. Chairman, if I could just go back to his last change, which was the cut-and-fill calculations.
Okay.
Dan, did you submit a waiver for the earth removal by law?
I didn't, and I want to talk to you about that.
Oh, okay.
Because what the bylaw says is unless, unless the proposed cut or fill is done in connection with an approved use...
Well, yeah.
Or an approved subdivision, then you need a special permit.
Yeah.
I mean, I think that takes it out of the special permit requirement, because we're gonna, you know, if this is approved, it's an approved use.
I would submit a waiver.
Okay. I mean, it's easy to do it, yeah, fine.
Just, there's no question. Okay, sorry about that.
No, it's all right. Anything else?
No, no, not right now, but I do have, I mean, I guess I do have other questions for the engineer. I had sent a, I had sent a recap of the last meeting, and so relocating snow storage was done, increasing the width of the entrance road, it appears that you've increased the width of the layout but not the actual pavement, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Moved the sidewalk to the other side, you did that. You added hydrants, and you've got confirmation from the fire chief that a ladder truck can access the site. Was there any kind of possible redesign for the internal traffic flow? Oh yeah, you got rid of parking spots. And then the site is a bit overdeveloped, can the density be reduced? And then the other thing was that, I noted that, I know that the Board of Selectmen voted to not allow access from the senior center for safety concerns. Is that anything that the applicant is planning on revisiting or not?
Okay, let me sort of take them in order...
There's two things.
Yeah.
Just the density and then the access.
But I also want to speak to the roadway width.
Sure.
We did look at the roadway width. My clients also went out and measured the last three subdivision roads in Abington that have been approved by the planning board, and all three of those roads are 22 feet or less, one is 20-foot, 21-foot, seven inches, but that's for a seven-lot subdivision. But for a 38-lot subdivision and a 20-something-lot subdivision, they had 22-foot roads. So, our feeling is that we're meeting what is required in the town of Abington with the road width, with respect to redesign. We looked at that, Sevi can explain that better than I can. I mean, what was driving, I think, part of the redesign question were Mr. Negreli's concerns about view between the two buildings at the bridge, and Sevi can explain in a minute, you know, that, you know, you can see through the building because it's all glass, and... What's your other question, Amy? We're happy to revisit that, and Sean or Glenn can speak to that better than I can, because I wasn't part of that.
I don't know if you want me on that. I don't know if this is a good thing or a bad thing to be further away from the board tonight. It's like every meeting, we get further back, maybe.
We have a gentleman that's actually doing it today, so...
Oh, okay. So, you know, we started the process of access to the senior center, through the senior center in May of 2017, and went in front of town meeting, where we received a unanimous vote to start, to authorize the Board of Selectmen at that time. We met with the Board of, the Council on Aging, we met with a number of folks, and that access road was considered advantageous. And then when we did the site walk during the project eligibility stage with Mass Housing on this project, when we submitted for the comprehensive permit, that's when some of the folks raised some concerns about doing it, but the, but the town never, the Board of Selectmen, the town, never put the RFP out until recently. Recently, when the RFP came out, it was actually set up so that we could use that accessway for access. You know, you could come in off of Summer Street and come into the site, but that was never the intent, the intent, well, that was our original intent, but after having some conversations with folks around town, the town felt, and the members of the Boards of Selectmen and town administrator staff, thought that that was not the best way to go. So, even though we bid on it as if it was an access point, and we submitted a qualified bid to do that, the town administrator indicated that he was, that that was not gonna be an accepted bid, and that they would start that process over again. Unfortunately, now we're two, almost, you know, two years into this process. To revisit that, I mean, we would be delaying this process several months, because the procurement process takes just far too long, and so we're back to up here. Now, we'd be open to post-permit without a condition to revisit that and to negotiate with the Council on Aging and the Board of Selectmen to have that as the access point, but, I mean, I don't think you could condition a permit anyway with public land, so, I mean, we'll do anything we can to utilize that space, because that's the best way to get into the site. But short of that, we have another access point, and that's what we've drawn up here.
I mean, for no other reason than that's a lot less expensive access to build.
Could you, could you give me the names of those two subdivision roads?
I have, it's Century Estates, this one, and...
It would just be for finding, I don't need it now.
Veteran's Way.
Do you know, do you happen to know the amount of houses on them? Can you get that to me?
Yeah.
Thank you. That's it for me.
That's it?
Right now.
Okay, thank you.
Should I go over there?
Yeah, that's fine. Like I said, we have a camera guy today, so...
So, I'm Sevi Strickelowski, Strickelowski Architecture. The concern is the intersection, which is actually a drop-off, an extreme pedestrian convenience between the two buildings, where you can go into either building, and as you can see, the lobby is completely glazed on all sides, and there'll be a visual connection long before you get to the corner. And we see this as very specifically a pedestrian area, heavy texture...
Yeah.
...in the sidewalk, lights, bells, whistles.
Do you want to put that right up there? Do you want to put that up there? Would that be better?
Yeah.
There you go.
Thanks. But much as when you come out of a parking garage at a sidewalk in the city, there are all kinds of pedestrian warnings, so that there'll be extreme traffic control here, it's just a five mile an hour limit with a warning, warning lights. So it's really not a traffic intersection as much as a pedestrian crossing, there'll be very clearly marked, lit, visual through the lobby to both sides of the intersection, but it's something that is, it really belongs to the residents, and cars are gonna be traveling over, as I say... traveling over, as I say, blocks, we can do speed bumps, we can do anything to slow them down, but have a warning so that when a car is coming, pedestrians are aware. It's really a very urban kind of a intersection.
Yeah, we were just concerned about the way it was laid out on, on the, on this right here.
On the site plan, you don't, you don't see that, but I think it'll be a very clearly a.
Safe area, if you will.
Safe area.
So is that not the thoroughfare for egress from the parking that's in the?
So.
Yeah, in this upper corner?
It's just one way, is that your question?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, you have all, you have parking here.
From that backside, yes, it is.
You have parking here, so this is the.
Although there is an alternative egress.
Okay.
So, is it one way or is it two-way?
It looks like two-way.
It's two-way?
Is it, is it two-way?
Right, because it's a, it's a drop-off on each side.
How wide is it?
It's 24 feet.
24 feet.
24 feet. 14 feet height.
Oh yeah, there's a stop.
Although, what is this?
I think that's a stop.
I don't know.
Oh, okay.
That's a two-sided.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
It just looks different on the plan, too.
It does. But I think we can provide the kind of detail that'll make it extremely safe.
Yeah, we're just a little concerned about, you know, the vision on that side.
But, the lobby is complete glass corner.
All right, thank you. Any questions, guys? Go ahead.
What's the height on the pedestrian roadway?
It's 14 feet. We addressed that with the, with the fire department. It actually, or we can make that any height.
Okay.
We can make that any height, but 14 feet is sort of standard highway reach height.
Okay, thanks.
Is, is there a reason you're having that particular area accessible to trap, to cars? Does that, is that something that would be necessary as opposed to just having it a pedestrian way?
Well, it is a drop-off.
Yeah, but it's the, the circle, right? So you can come in and then go immediately back out if you were dropping somebody off. This, my concern is people are going to come in there and drive through there to get to the back, back parking lot. That's what I think people will end up doing, because it's a shorter distance. It's, I understand the drop-off end of it, but it's, to me, it looks like it's going to be a cut through for people to get to that parking lot.
Coming in from here, the visibility is very good. But, you know, this is what makes a community out of this.
Yeah, I, I understand that whole.
Yeah, because it's connected, yeah.
And the connection between the two buildings and.
So it's probably, wouldn't it be a better community if you didn't have cars racing through?
Just have them drive around.
Just have them come around, yeah.
I don't see, yeah.
I mean, you, even if it were pavers, fire trucks could get through if they had, or emergency vehicles, but just have no, just don't allow cars to go through, just have a drop-off and come, have them come back out.
Because the, the other thing is you have a patio right there on that particular.
Right, you have a patio, you have this corner, you've got a lot going on.
There's a lot going on there that, that raises some concerns with me, but.
I, I think it will. Again, it's a small area, no, I shouldn't say a small area, but it's in between the two buildings.
Yeah, it's tight.
It's tight. It's a good idea you have there, though. Just block it off.
Look at the traffic, the traffic flow.
Yeah, that's true, too. Dropping off. How many entrances are there? One, two, three, four, five, six. All right.
Um, right now.
Anybody?
We do need to continue.
No opening. I'll open the floor.
It's up to you.
Maybe here.
All right, so we have no other questions, but I will open up to the floor. Anyone got any questions? Ma'am?
I'm.
Can you state your name?
Linda Holt, 2009 woman.
Okay.
I was just wondering if the road was going to, from foot of street going down, is it going to be going slow down or are you filling in? Talking more, yeah, homes up front.
Which, which way does that go?
Is it going to be slipping down the way it is now?
Because it's kind of level, right?
It starts to dip.
Goes, then it goes down, then up? Hard to tell with all that snow right now.
If you tell them that, so.
So right now it goes from like 116.
The first 50 to 70 feet is a leveling area, it's 2%, but it is sloping down into the 40. And then it continues, then it continues down to a roof, further, before it starts climbing down. It's generally from the road in, like I said, the first 50 to 75 feet, it's generally flattened out the same grade as the road. That was one, that's one of the requirements of a roadway as it's coming in to an intersecting street to have a, a kind of a la, a flat leveled area where you can look both ways and slow down and, and see what's coming from around you.
Okay, I understand that, but as you go on my property, with the fence going down, it does go down. I'm asking, are you filling in that, or is your road going to go like this and stay like that?
We're filling to create the road and then sloping down on either side.
Okay, so at the corner of my fence, are you going to be filling in the road up?
I'm not sure I understand what you're, yeah.
No, you just said it, at the entrance, it's got to be level, right? It's supposed to be level. She's asking you, you have to fill in to make it level.
Not really, no. Because at the street, it's at elevation 116.3, which is where we are, and then from one, there's a contour of 114 that's here through these two yards, and we're matching that. So it's generally already basically flat. We're not doing much before you're creating at that end.
Okay, that answer your question?
So you're not filling in near my property? You're leaving the road just the way it is?
Yeah, it's generally at the same grade, whether there's a slight modification or not. I can't say that I'm not, we're not filling, but it's not a major grade change. It's like a half a foot either way, tops.
Okay. I was curious because if the road was being raised even six inches, it's, you know, showing through the privacy of our yard, because our fence is going to be up here shorter where the cars going by, people won't, so that's why I was asking where the fill line was going to be.
It generally matches the same grade, yeah. And, I mean, on the larger plan, you could, if you wanted to see, but there's a contour of 116 out by the road, again, existing grade of the road is 116.3. We're coming in, there's a 115 here, and we're matching a 114 that's in the back, which is almost in line with the back of your house. And then from there, it starts, the road starts dropping down.
The back of my house or the back of my yard?
The back line of your house. From the back line of your house, the road starts dropping back down.
And that's where you're filling, is that what you're saying?
No, he's, he's saying it's dropping.
I'm really filling much.
It's falling, following that contour.
The road's going from 116, 115, 114, 112.
That's not much at all, yeah.
110, 108, 106, 104, so it's, it's just a gradual slope down.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, any other questions? Go ahead, go ahead.
Just to make it clear, we sat down with the fire chief, and we gave him the plans, and that's what he wanted the fire, I was, he said, "Do you want any more?" He said, "That's what I want." We're supposed to send a letter in and something like that.
Yeah, I was going to say, can we get the letter?
We did.
Oh, you did, okay.
We got a letter from the fire chief. I got one. So, you got one. You sent it to me.
Hey, anybody else? All right, close it to the floor, bring it back to the board. Any questions?
We have no questions at this point.
What were they asking her for?
We have to continue it so Sean can look at everything. Attorney Bailey has agreed to put together a complete package for our consultant and a hard copy of everything, that he doesn't have to put together or anything, and get it to him as soon as possible. So, is there any way that we could do this on April 11th at your other, at your regular hearing? Because I'm not here on the 4th.
We really hate to do that, I mean.
Do you want to do it on the 3rd? Could you do it another night besides Thursday?
Guys?
Fine with me.
Fine with me.
April 3rd, could we do?
If it works out.
Finance committee usually has this room on, on a Wednesday night.
Every Wednesday night?
Pretty much.
Probably at this point, right?
Okay. I can do.
Do we have much of an agenda for April yet, or?
We do the 9th, April, that's a Tuesday.
It's too early.
Yeah, it's too early, and we could be loaded and.
All right, we couldn't bump them off.
What?
I still doubt it. I mean, we haven't been there ever.
That would be the night.
Yeah.
Please.
That would be the night, right?
I can do Tuesday, the 9th, but that would, you would have two meetings in one week.
I think I'd rather do that than, things happen spread out. I don't know about you guys, what do you think?
I could do the 9th.
9th is okay.
I can do the 9th.
Uh, 9th is.
Medophenon, maybe.
Does he need a month? Does he need a month, should we do?
Yeah.
Obviously, he needs a month.
Yeah.
And when you're ready, I do have one additional thing to say. There are full plan sets that have been filed with the zoning board office.
Yep.
So.
So are you going to get the plans to Sean, or are we going to have to do that? You said you would.
I will get them to Sean.
Okay.
Yeah, I know, I mean, the, the, the communication is, we're struggling with because we've been told by Sean not to send anything to him.
No, I, I talked to him today, I told you that.
Yeah, I know, but previously, you know.
It's nothing to do with us, I mean, you guys have to figure it out, I mean, bottom line.
Well, they've accessed it online as well, because I have an audit function on the, on the online folder, so.
So, April 9th?
Yes, yes, please.
7:00 PM? Correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So next hearing on this, folks, for those of you who are following along, will be Tuesday, April 9th at 7:00 PM. Do we have a, this a motion to continue at this point?
I'll make a motion to continue the petition of Abington Investments LLC, 245 Central Street, for a comprehensive permit under chapter 40B until April 9th at 7:00 PM.
I'll second it.
All favor?
Aye.
I'll say.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Do we have anything else? Do we have minutes or anything to do, or?
No, I didn't think you'd know, sure.
No, okay. All right, um, in that case, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'd be happy to second that one.
All favor?
Aye.
You guys get to see twice that we do.
Be a good week.
Wow.
That one's all great.
Combination feet.
Oh, sure.
All manly for select.
All right.
All right, man, it's good.